What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at ICM scenarios from steel positions. Oh, here we go. Here we go already. What do you guys do here? I think I'm calling.
I think I think I'm calling.
Twenty twenty, oh yeah, okay, so you have really nothing much to lose here.
He is ripping in the chip leader though.
Yeah, he is, I think.
What kind of hand is ripping here?
At twenty though, his best hands aren't ripping.
So he should have some suited aces, he's probably got some, yeah, I was gonna say pairs, but he doesn't really have a ton of pairs. It's really just a lot of suited aces, which like, if you look at what he's ripping, you're doing quite well against that entire block of whatever.
He's, what's he ripping here, like one percent of hands, it's hard to know, right?
Five percent. It's not hard.
I'm not actually, I just looked at the hand and then closed it. So four point six percent. Well. Still pretty good against that. It's a flip.
Oh.
On range.
This night, this. The suited one is mixing.
Wow, cause he's ripping into the chip leader, so it's like scary, something could happen here, we don't really need to put chips in here. Very tough. Alright, we start on a mistake. We lost our shirt. When I see him fun in the book, oh.
Ah yeah, 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 I mean, you got six big blinds.
You got eight, you blocked the buttons, you know what you say, right?
Honestly, it feels bad, um, feels kinda bad, right?
I think eight is below the bottom of the range.
Eight is below the bottom.
Yeah, you've, you have six chips left, put it in.
The floor.
Yeah, look at sevens, sevens is kinda like.
Like he's opening every suited eight here.
Yeah, but you, you look at the off suited for the bottom, cause there's four times as many off suits as there were suited combos. Or three times as many.
Uh, that first hand, the ace jack was that a fold?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a fold.
That's surprising.
If you notice up, he also has like king seven, king six, king five, like that, and the queen acts that below the eight that actually equal all the eight, so he's got even worse bottoms that can fold still.
Yeah.
Uh, my goodness. What is this? All in call, this call is scary as hell, and here we are with jacks. We block a lot of the calls, we block the worst calls, this is a funny one, are we gonna fold?
Yeah, there's a twelve stack and eighteen stack, this is just the spot to fold.
We need to fold our jacks. Stay, stay out of the way.
Oh, and check it down.
Call and check it down.
I don't know, they're gonna check it down with you.
Oh, I got a secret handshake under the table.
We really, do we really need to fold?
I guess.
Who agrees with the fold?
A folding or jam, it's gonna probably depend on my mood in that moment.
Um, I think, I'm getting out of the way of this, like, I just don't see, uh, it's free money, like, um, I just don't see a reason to really get involved here at this point. Like that button range is just gonna be trouble a lot. Maybe it's too nitty.
Okay.
Maybe it is too nitty.
Oh, it does call.
Just kind of, well, it raises.
Oh, raises, let's see, so it's gonna raise fold? Or is it ever gonna raise call? I guess it raised, clean raise folds?
I don't know, man, I don't think it's gonna have a raise fold, I think.
Looks like it only goes to like eleven. When it does raise, raise one point seven five X.
So that's his calling range, he doesn't have a click range at all on this, on this sim. Okay, so we can squeeze? Alright, two mistakes on three hands, great. I wanna limp. We could raise probably.
There is a shorter stack, we could probably raise. Ooh, all in.
All in.
This is going great.
These charts I'll never ever remember.
Alright.
The charts are fluid because it's all dependent on the stack distribution, so you don't, never think of trying to remember a chart here. Right, you gotta try and figure out what drives us in different directions.
I think, I think this hand wants to jam, but there was a six big blind. The twelve with nine, we go broke before these guys, this is a disaster.
I'm jamming.
Ken wants to jam us like a chippy V warrior, okay?
Chippy V warrior, I love that.
Uh. Is, is that scaring anyone?
I probably just play call here in game, I could see, I, this is not a bad hand to jam, it's got like some of, some good qualities, like.
The only thing I'm, I don't wanna that's making me think that call might not be the best is we're limping into the chip leader who are second in chips. How often is he gonna shove on us just because we limped?
Yeah, I mean, that's where my thought process was Joey, like if I do anything besides jam, he could just put me in a box.
But if we call and you raise two nicks, we can easily call, no?
Right, yeah, if he does three big blinds, it's an easy call.
If he puts us in a box, if, if we limp, it goes all in, there's a six, there's a twelve, it's kind of easy, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm afraid that the limp is exploitative though.
Wow.
Problem is like.
We can, we limp strong here sometimes, no?
Stronger than this, I think.
And weaker hands.
I think I wanna raise, oh, it is a limp.
Little bit of jams.
I like limping, that's the best option there. Cause we're living in a limp strong sometimes. Ooh, this, this is the polar portion. Gonna fold or raise?
Jam.
I don't like folding with it.
I think I just do a lot of limping with this combo at this situation, for better or worse.
I'm out.
Mm-hmm, yeah, which is good.
Offsuit, but if it was suited, I'd raise it.
Which would be good.
Yeah, makes sense.
Uh, you could probably three bet this guy some.
I think I saw, I saw Julian winning a tournament or getting close to it, congrats, man.
Nice.
Thank you, yeah, I've been working hard, man, it's, it's brutal on ACR, there's so many answers.
What about here? Hmm, I wanna, oh my goodness. Chip leader two, five at ten, I have a strong hand, I need to play here. It's a suited ace, we raised.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I kinda like three betting.
Yeah, definite three bet here with forty six.
Two bet or call, both options.
Now, like, it, it is approaching that region that kind of like, that does wanna call, but, I mean, this is where most of your racing is coming from, these these suited aces.
Yeah, I love, love how suited aces like that.
With I would fold here, you gotta call with any suited stuff, I guess.
Oh, it'd be insane to do anything else other than fold here, yeah.
Yeah, higher suited combos, maybe I'd call, but fold here for sure.
Uh. Okay, so then short stack here, short stack here.
Hold.
You gotta fold here?
Yeah, fold.
It's a face card. I don't know.
There's a nine and a twelve behind, like, this is just a fold, and a fifteen, we're, we're second in chips.
Okay. Yeah, queen seven is the one you kinda need to defend. I'm gonna call that, oh, well, he's so short.
Yeah, I would call here.
He's queen off, probably good enough. We just call?
It's, that's close, yeah, call.
Yeah, we don't have to show.
Doesn't ma- doesn't matter, I think, cause they, they, they're just like.
I was gonna say queen would be the very.
Call.
Uh, I I don't know, man. This is a really strong hand and you got a really good price, but like, you got ten big blinds, it's, it's probably a call.
All there?
No.
No, 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 you got really, you got bad blockers and, uh, you're in the big blind, I don't think it's at all, and it's just a call.
You want a chance to realize your equity with the straight and the flush here.
Yeah, that, that, that's it.
Okay, so you don't wanna jam nine eight, but maybe ten nine, anyone jamming ten nine here, or jack ten?
Nope.
Yeah, I, ten nine is one of the, um.
I don't know, right?
Things that, it comes, we've been doing a lot of work with sixes on this and ten nine suited seems to come up on a lot of the charts.
I mean.
It seems to be like a solver special.
I think you can fold, I think you can fold this, I was gonna say, I think you can fold this.
Can you, you think he's.
The guy's got, the guy's got eight big blinds, he's just, the probability of this guy going broke and you getting paid here is high.
Okay, okay, yeah, he's gonna tangle with the big line. Dude.
Um.
Call.
Man.
There is, there is some.
You're in here, no?
There is some raising from this region of the charts too, though.
So the problem is, you have a queen, which is not great, but you have a suited ten, which is pretty good, I, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised to see some raising here, maybe. I call this in game, I think, though.
Actually, no. I think queen ten might be in, there's a block, usually in these ICM charts, there's a block around king jack, queen jack, king ten, queen ten, jack ten.
So we don't have an all-in component here. All in.
You throw all in against thirty-four big blinds.
Yeah, you will have an all-in component here, I think.
Would, would this end in that?
I, I don't know, I think it's gonna want more like ace six, I wouldn't be surprised to see like your, your suited like ace whatever in there, suited ace like nine or something.
Yeah, so the easy thing is to call, right, but I would have done all in.
See that, king jack, king ten, queen jack, queen ten suited? That shows up on a lot of the charts in ICM.
Anyway, yeah, so it is a lot of suited aces, a lot of suited kings, and there is some suited queens there too.
Cause when we jam here, we put him in a box, like, this guy can't do anything when we jam. And then we're gonna be putting him in, in the top spot as well, but he opens from the button, so we should be loose enough. Uh, he doesn't have a calling range here, look at this.
Yeah, it's very small.
Suited king, eleven big blinds, I'm all in.
Probably good.
A chippy V, it's good.
Look at the offsuit, it's the offsuit, look at the offsuit.
Yeah, more of a call. Okay, easy, pocket kings. Hmm, I think I was, uh, going all in with aces as well.
Um, this is probably some, a good hand to put some pressure.
All the cookies?
Probably.
All in or fold here?
So it, it kinda converges around that, uh, the floor of their range, but like, using suited kings is definitely good.
Just call.
I, I like call.
Yeah, I'd be a call here.
Jack nine.
Yeah.
You're, you're deep enough, I think it's gonna pull from that block, so.
I'll tell you what, probably.
This might max calls and raises.
Yeah, okay, I think we all agree. Think it would, that's the thing, right, it's not a suited ace, not a suited king, so you can't really raise with it, that's what I thought. Just a call.
I think if we're short or we, it mixes.
I'd be surprised. Uh, queen six, yeah, sure. And this is the spot where we saw like, how, how was this called, the pyramid of room? Triangle of that? We were close, right?
Something like that.
I was back in squeeze land.
Uh.
I mean, you got, you got one of the specials, like, I think this is like a solver approved thing sometimes.
Raise or all in?
We just probably.
I think, with our stacking, two, two players in the pot already all in.
Oof, I would say it's probably an all-in, but in game, I'm never doing this, like, I.
Yeah, shorter stacks, we can't do it.
Yeah, in game, I would never all in, ace four.
So we're just for raise?
I think you jam, you're at a position, right?
Yeah, you're too short to raise.
You wanna jam, you're gonna go broke before these two folks, they're gonna be very happy. The emojis are gonna be flowing, man, when, when this guy calls you, the emojis here are gonna be flowing.
I think if you have a bluff, this is where it's coming from, these suited wheels.
We can still three bet small?
No. Nah, 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 you jam.
Play too big.
What do you do with aces here, you don't put it in?
You might, uh, have a non-all-in sizing with aces.
Let's go, let's give it a shot. Okay.
It's okay.
Actually, all options are on the table, except for calling.
Um, so there is a shorter stack still. You can probably play jam here, twenty effective.
It's better to jam than to squeeze and call it off, right?
I think so, I was just debating a call is the only thing, because like you're suited you're suited ace queen, ace jacks, of the world kinda wanna call here sometimes, but it's obviously good to raise it.
From the small blind, there hasn't been many calls when we're in the small blind against an open.
Yeah, you see that in these ICM rich environments.
Mostly cash.
What are we gonna do here?
This, this is a fold.
Uh.
I don't know, Pete, I don't know, I think it's.
I.
This is mixing a chippy V, this is gonna be a fold.
I think it's either a fold or a raise.
Alright.
Oh, we, we can't raise it, we gotta be, we gotta be respectful, actually, never mind.
At chippy V, you can find a call there, but it's bottom of range and I see I'm not just.
So here we can just fold, right?
You might actually see some raises here. Like, it's not gonna pull a lot, but it, it might pull from the suited, um, your offsuit tens a little bit.
Never. Never.
I mean, the, the risk premium's kinda high, right?
Never, you crazy? I don't know what you're talking about. How many tables you got going, you crazy?
Look at king jack, look at king jack!
There's no offsuit ten here.
No, there's not.
What are you talking about?
Well, look at ace ten.
I'm not looking.
Uh, you gotta be respectful.
So we limp?
Limp or fold?
I'd limp or fold, yeah.
To fold. There's a lot of all-ins for a respectful strategy, right?
Uh, yeah, there is. I thought you'd have to be more respectful than that.
We're very respectful, we're all pretty high, but when we play, kind of, uh.
We play.
Wow. I don't know, it doesn't.
Snap fold?
Yeah.
This is not an easy, another tough spot for me, I don't know for you guys, but. Uh, okay, that's fold.
Fold.
Fold, yeah.
Call.
Okay, yeah, calling seems fine.
Yeah, I'd call on the button, yeah.
Look at that, it's pretty tight.
Don't get caught with the offsuit one.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Queen would be bottom right there on the button, for sure.
You probably just complete here.
Hmm. Okay, I know what you do with jack five suited.
Jack five is closer.
Yeah, jack five is like borderline. I think they still ca- call, but.
Ten four suited.
I mean, okay, you, you got me, I'll let go of ten four.
Ten four suited, easy fold.
Jack five, we saw?
Jack five, call.
I think ten fours in that pyramid, oh wow, the pyramid's bigger than.
Ooh, fun thing here.
Wow.
This is the, this is the pyramid of death.
Pyramid of death.
That's a larger pyramid than I've seen before.
It's not the little triangle. Why is it like that? Very deep stack, two late positions.
And there's a ten big blind, there's a ten big blind guy.
This is it.
That's what throws it off, yeah.
And also.
You can look at, you can look at the actual risk premiums too of this situation, I think, is there a way you can actually look at those to see? Yeah, maybe it's there. No. You gotta actually pull up the other thing, if you wanted to look at that, but they're just gonna be really high risk premiums playing this deep with those guys.
Very interesting, so shorts, we are three big stack and there's a very short one.
I think also.
Do that, we can't even complete most of it.
What's relevant is when there's already a caller.
Yeah.
Our ranges get really tight when somebody else is already in the pot.
Uh, you fold this.
Fold, yeah.
Yep, fold.
That fold, ace queen plus.
Fold.
Ace jack's an interesting question, but I think I agree with you, Pete, it's probably ace queen plus.
Yeah, ace queen plus, for sure.
I'm gonna disagree, just based on the fact that I know that pre-flop academy likes playing with the edges.
What does that mean?
Man, oh man.
Like it, if ace jack is the bottom, they wouldn't have a hand this far off from the bottom.
Oh, I see what you're saying, they do play with the edges sometimes. Well, I mean, there's a, there's a five and a six, and you're a fourteen and eleven, like, this is pretty high risk premium.
Yeah.
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 So ace jack, we say?
I'm not playing, I'm, I'm folding ace jack.
I think it might, see what I mean?
Ooh, I'm a neat.
Yeah, I'm real nitty right here.
Pre-flop academy plays right around the edges.
Well, quick, giving out the cheat codes, Joey, geez. Uh.
Seems like an easy call.
Easy call, yeah.
Ooh. Maybe not so easy.
Playing with fire, right?
Oh. Okay, twenty-two, fifteen, twenty-six, thirty-two, we have the least risk premium. This guy is not the button, he's the car off.
This is a, this is a fold for me.
Fold, yeah, fold. Close, right?
Oh.
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 This guy.
Ace queen call, king's here. Queen fold.
You are just smoked by any random ace three he decides to put in there.
Yep.
You're, 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 you're competitive with his bluffs. Like, what, what are you like, what are you crushing here?
We have the lowest risk premium, I don't have to crush anything, I'm flipping if I'm ahead fifty-one to forty-nine, it ain't bad, right?
Look at all those other suited kings he raises.
Yeah, I mean, you are doing okay with this range.
And against pairs, yeah, I mean, I'm just snapping it.
I am folding.
I think, I think this might be a problem when I look at that range now.
Final table, I'd be fold.
Yeah, I think it's a.
Wow, that's a shocker.
Yeah, you're.
We just saw the range.
All of his other kings and queens and jacks that are suited and his tidy pairs, you're just flipping against them. Behind against.
So.
Ace four, ace five, but.
Now, the thing you gotta think about here is, and this is where you gotta be flexible, is like, if you're actually in the scenario in game, we know what the equilibrium strategy looks like and we know what the response is.
Our buddy is never doing that.
No.
You gotta ask yourself if buddy is putting forty-four big blinds in the middle with king nine, king eight.
Well, he's only putting, he's only putting twenty-two in, he's a large stack, nobody else is close to him.
Yeah, thank you, Joey, thank you, Joe, you know what I mean, though?
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, we're going here, going to fold? Right?
I mean, I would fold.
Yeah, fold.
Now, we're the shorty.
No, we're not.
You're almost the shorty, you're almost the shorty.
Alright. Tough to get it right.
This is an easy one.
Yeah, yeah, this is an easy one to get, right, isn't that right, kid?
See, we make a mistake, then they give us a very easy one.
Well, not, queen two is in there. That's why they gave it to us.
Okay, so this is one to think about here, this is, this is something realistic you can start applying, right, so.
I snap fold.
This is a good one that you there are situations, you can definitely raise this hand, it's just trying to determine if this is it.
We're deep enough. This guy's the button, he has a good portion of his range, he's gonna give up. Uh, I think this is a good spot to give it a shot.
Right, so, so hands like this are attacking like his trashy ace six opens that are gonna be folds, which he has a lot of. He should anyways, right?
And, and hit like his king tens, king nine suited he has. His king nine and king eight off, he, he's not gonna wanna call those.
Yeah, the, the two elements of attack here, you, you, you unblock his folds with a seven and eight or a nine, cause you have.
Yes, yeah, that's right, Pete.
You were having a king.
Yep, that's right, Pete. I think you just call here, I don't think you gotta get fancy.
This is like the middle.
What kinda hand do we stuff in his face?
Ace X, you're gonna be very blocker oriented here, I think you're just gonna jam most of your ace X in his face.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be near the top and the bottom.
Okay, so ace X?
Even some suited, some suited king X are in there. Uh, yeah, this is, so the solver might just put it in here, but I, this is another node that I'm just never doing in real life.
Yeah, yeah, I'd fold there with the re-raise.
It seems crazy, right, like, but if you're gonna have a bluff, if you're gonna have a bluff, this is a pretty good combo.
It is, I just never get lucky when it comes to that, man, I always lose.
I don't know, I don't see much of this or this.
Well, that's the problem, right, Louis, like, this is why you gotta, you gotta approach some of this with a grain of salt.
Yeah.
Every time I'm in a situation like that and it's near the, you know, deep in a tournament like that, they always have it.
You can fold, small pairs play terrible on final table.
We're super deep and we're like middle stack against middle stack, kind of.
I'm kind of with Joey, I think it's gonna mix folds and maybe some trace call. I'm kind of with Joey. I think it's gonna mix folds and maybe some trace calling. Like, you, you definitely, it's gonna wanna call, but I think just the scenario is gonna push it towards fold.
Hmm.
It's actually calling much wider than I thought. I thought it wasn't gonna be as aggressive with the pairs.
Bucket dudes.
I know it's, they just don't, they just don't lose, right?
Yeah, like. Position against the widest range and able to apply pressure post swap with that hand.
Thing is, if we flop our card, we can just scam in for a fortune.
So, this might be a bluff candidate. Your equal stack ten big blinds, risk premium's pretty high. It may pull from this, but it may fold. It's gonna be folder all in. I don't know.
I'd be bold.
Actually, like, I'm way out of line. This is, you're too shy. You are way too shallow to be playing these offsuit combos.
Especially.
They're holding like bucket tens there.
Yeah, see, that's crazy, man. Like, I'm, I'm here like borderline advocating for jamming ace deuce off and, uh, you're, you're folding pocket tens. Uh, low, low frequency bluff maybe, but it's a fold mainly.
Wow.
Wow, it actually called.
Yeah, I'm shocked by that.
Uh, caller folds, I guess.
Twelve, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four. This is the box.
It's the offsuit, though.
This is the box.
Yeah, the offsuit kills it for me.
Take it back.
We're, we're, we're too hot. It's gonna call because we're too high up compared to what we opened.
See, I kinda, I kinda think Pete might have it right, but I was leaning fold.
I was fold all day cuz it's off.
Problem is, this is the box. We open from the button. He puts us in the box and then we can't do anything because, uh, of these two.
This is a scam combo. It's a completely scam combo, like.
Yeah.
Look, look at what he's three betting and you're gonna realize like this is just like, kind of in a rough spot.
Interesting, not, definitely not meeting MDF with, uh, holding sixty-five percent of range there.
Well, that's the whole risk premium thing. Like, MDF is. Uh, you, you don't meet MDF with risk premium.
I'm going all in?
I think, I think you're actually, I think you're folding.
No, check this out. This guy's the button. He has an open full range. We covered him. We put him in the box. He can't call because of this five and six.
I think we're just too shallow.
We box him. We can box him.
I don't hate it. I mean, this is a, this is a pretty good bluff combo. I just think we're too shallow. I would fold. I.
Not a bluff, man. This is king ten suited, man.
Yeah, it's suited. I, I'll end here.
If you lose this hand, I mean, it's pretty devastating.
We, he's not gonna run it because there's two short stack. He's still ahead of these two. You can't call it off. And he's.
I mean, honestly, king ten is kind of like ace five. Like, i- it's hard not to wanna bluff a king ten suited. It really is.
We're in trouble when we get called.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Well, Joey, when you get called, you just pray that he has ace queen or something and you show up with your forty percent equity or whatever it is.
You just hit the flush.
Yeah, the problem is, do you think people are opening off of a ten big blind stack? With raised folds there, like, the.
Well, there's, there's, there's the other part of the equation, Pete.
I think so. I really think so.
I'm doing some doubt.
That happens a lot when you play live. I've seen that a lot when I played live.
Seen that a lot online as well.
Uh, twenty equa stack. So, I'm folding. I think this, it may pull from like, it may try to pressure with this region of the deck.
We gotta go bold, right?
Yeah.
I would, I think I would, I think I would raise.
Oh my goodness.
Whoa.
What is this?
Whoa.
Who the fuck was that? Did I call this? I'm getting an outer coffee.
Alright.
This is too much for me.
Oh, okay. Everybody hits one big. That's probably why I showed up.
What is this? Is all those offsuit aces, kings, queens, jacks and tens are the value that balances out the sevens, sixes, fives, fours and threes that are the bluffs? Wait, so this is a value?
Hey, Peter, you got something wrong with your mic.
Oh.
Just a little mofolds.
You're very quiet today, Peter.
Alright.
Uh, yeah, get out of here.
Yeah, that's to get out of town.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, but what do we call it? King, queen off here.
Ooh, king, queen off is close, I think.
Suited, I'd call. King, queen off, I'd call.
About to risk premium. There's a six there. There's a nineteen. Okay, so he's re- he really just cares about the six. So I think king, queen is a call. King, queen off is a call here.
Probably, it's gonna be close for sure. I think, I think maybe the offsuit one should just fold.
Alright, I'm calling on the chat here. You say king, queen, call or fold? Like this.
We got a king, queen call by Louis. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you out, Louis. I'm gonna say king, queen, oh, fold.
Yeah, thank you, Gavin.
I'm calling king, queen off.
Write it.
Alright.
Write it, you chippy V warrior.
King, queen, king, queen call all day. I'm, I'm with Andy. Let's go. I'm, I'm with the Andy here.
Okay. King, queen off hole. I think it's a good fold. No.
It's a tight fold, but.
You nits. Lots of nits around here. Look at the nits.
I am. I'm, I'm super. I'm different.
All the nits, Peter. Have you seen that bunch of nits here?
I won't lie. I know I am.
Super nits warriors. Oh, Ken is so happy. Ken, Ken is so mad happy. Chippy V warrior, king one. Look at this and you can call king ten off here. You can call this queen jack. What are you calling this queen jack in?
No.
Alright, that was a crazy spot.
Uh. Call, no, you're, are, well, do you call?
There's a box here.
I think you just called this.
This guy opens the box. It's ace queen off on the final table. Do you know how much pain it is? Just, just seeing this, I, I'm, I'm going through past pain, like.
Oh, in game, I, I, I just fold.
I'm hurt already. I'm just looking at this. I'm like, oh. What are we gonna do? We're never gonna jam, right? Never.
I don't think jamming's a good option.
So it's like ace jack, easy fold? Ace queen is like mixing?
Yes, I think ace queen's indifferent.
Ninety percent call?
I, 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 I wouldn't even be surprised to see like it mixing folds, but yeah, I think primary call. Okay, it's mainly, it's mainly a folds.
Yeah, I was living towards fold, but.
My goodness, the box. We're just putting the box. We can't even do anything with this queen. You gotta fold. This is offensive to me.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to fold positions like that sometimes.
I knew it was gonna all in sometimes. But folding that often? No.
That's something I've learned going deeper in tournaments, to not be scared to fold bigger hands like that. Cuz a lot of times, you know, before, I would always be betting on or whatever, and I've learned that sometimes playing careful and fold will save you a long run.
What about here?
Fold.
Yeah, this is.
Fold, yeah.
Seems like a twelve. Let me see. You got one short stack. Seems like a pretty easy fold, I guess.
Okay, what's the floor?
Ace nine?
I am kind of, alright, let's look at the chip stacks, so.
Yeah, ace nine would be my, my bottom.
I'm kinda like, maybe. It's probably gonna call around that, but.
This might be where there's a gap from like ace nine, ace eight to ace five.
And then, do we ever call with king, queen off suit there?
King, queen off, I am calling. King, jack off, I am calling.
This is a different scenario. You have a, a ton to lose here. I think it's suicide.
I win there some chip leader.
Well.
Oh, the other side of the middle.
Well, the, the. The problem with that is, you know, you gotta make these final tables frequently enough to, uh, justify that call.
Exactly.
I think it's a easy fold with king, queen off.
Okay, and then ace nine, we would call AC. What about AC?
I'm thinking like somewhere around like ace seven is where it's gonna be indifferent.
Alright, let's see. Oh my goodness.
God, it's calling so wide.
Yeah, I'm not calling that wide with the offsuit aces on, that's really.
Calling so wide.
Remember the cheat code for this?
We're, we're, we're trying to learn GTO responses, not, uh, hacking PFA algorithms.
So he's jamming really wide here, right?
Yeah, that's wild, man.
Okay.
Ass fuck. Ay, ay, ay.
Oh, man.
I'm folding.
Fold.
Yeah, I'd fold.
I'm snapping wolf.
Not, 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 well, not.
Or the short stack.
I'm calling cuz we're.
It's all.
Look at the chip distribution here.
Oh, yeah, that might.
Alright, hey, how about this? Okay, so try to construct his jamming range. What do you think he's jamming here?
I tell you what. Maybe pocket eight and pocket nine is really not a bad call here, right?
That's what I'm thinking.
Maybe you're better off with pocket sevens here. Does that?
I'm just trying to say like.
Anything, right? Pocket seven's the same thing as eights or, but they do block anything, right?
For everyone who wants to call, what percentage of his range do you think he's just jamming like this?
You gotta find the LP, king five suited specials. Jack ten suited, queen ten suited, king ten suited, king jack, queen.
That's a good, that's a good response. Five percent is what he thinks.
Woo, look at this.
I didn't think it was gonna be that much.
Thing is, oh, I see. He's jamming thirty into affect him.
It's a lot, right?
Jamming into two guys who.
He's risking his life, so.
Yeah, he's jamming into two guys who have, have him covered.
Now, that being said, like this jam, like if this is his jamming range, you, you're doing okay, but you're flipping with it the entire range, which is like, I don't know if you necessarily wanna be doing.
Yeah, you don't wanna flip it these.
Man, nines.
Yeah, I said nines would be my bottom.
Yeah.
Same hand, actually, so it's not a huge mistake.
I've been in similar situations and I've called with eights and they'll have nines. Or sometimes you get lucky, call with eights and they'll have sevens, but it's.
Do you fold ace jack here suited?
I probably don't.
I do.
You do? Ace jack suited?
Dude, I'm not calling ace jack. Ace jack and ace queen are just scam hands here. Twenty-eight big blinds.
Ace queen.
Call.
Yeah, I would, I would probably call ace queen suited. I'm probably folding ace queen off, though.
Yeah, ace queen off, the fold for sure.
I like to look. No, we, this is the Vincent Lam race.
I like. Uh, you probably raise. I kinda like raising.
This is a lam race.
This is a lam race?
Lam race.
We.
Normally, I would be a call here.
We have a lot more limbs in this spot cuz we got equal stacks.
This is like the only spot where VTO meets reality. So I remember it.
I love, my name starts with a G, so you guys can't make that joke about me.
Um.
Yeah, jam?
Rip it.
I would fold.
Rip this.
Yeah, fold with ten, ten bigs.
I'd call.
It's a multi-way pot. It's probably okay to call, but I think it's.
It's probably okay to fold like king nine, king ten, right? But king, queen.
I think you just call.
On your equity. Oh, of course.
Nine, ten is fine, but king, queen stupid.
It's starting to mix king, jack there, yeah, but king, queen is. Probably too good. I would just jam into this guy's face. What is this?
Yeah, that's a jam all day.
Disrespectful bet.
Do you not?
It was.
Long stack?
No. I'm, I'm offended that he clicked my, my forty big blinds.
Why is today? This is not the first time. Uh.
But we're gonna have a lot of limping.
This is gonna be on the cusp of raising.
Now, we have very little raising into the big stack.
That's one that's gonna find it.
I think we're raising.
Yeah, we're the big stack. We can.
Mostly raise.
Just then.
I would, I would, uh, I would raise this guy.
Oh.
Yeah, I'd limit it.
Okay.
Fold.
Yeah, fold. Two, this call.
No all-ins?
Negative, not with the offsuit. Suited, it's like also a mile out.
Excuse me.
Uh, maybe we call or we?
I fold.
Yeah, I see. I'm like, I just fold.
Fold. Fold simulator.
Okay, you fold easy, but then what's the floor?
Um.
Oh, it's Jack. Has to be a Jack.
I would, so look at, let's look at the arrangement. It's seventeen equa stack. Yikes. This is, uh.
So we're gonna have to call like.
Risk premium's high. Risk premium is high when everybody's equal stack.
Yeah.
I, I think it's gonna be like ace queen, probably.
I think, uh, ace ten has to be in there.
Ace ten, ay, ay, ay.
I was gonna say Jack. I hadn't pushed it.
I think he's pushing a lot. He is pushing not so much. Eight percent, nine percent.
It's pretty. It's blocker oriented stuff. It's pretty respectful.
Equal stacks changes a lot, right?
That makes I see. It makes that.
Hard for me to figure out these symmetrical deals.
Ace Jack suited is pulling, Jesus Christ.
Ace queen suited is where it's at.
Yeah. Crazy.
Ace queen might be in there, but we don't. I guess we shove ace queen instead of.
Ay, 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 ay.
But this is has to be a fold?
Easy, yeah.
What do you do with the stand off here? Ace nine suited.
Um.
Fold.
Fold. I'd go ace ten sooner or higher.
I'm, I'm calling with ace nine suited here, definitely.
Ace nine suited is an interesting question. I just, um.
I'm playing with ace ten off as well.
Ay, 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 ay.
You mean you're rejamming?
I would not play, you know.
I'm like ace jacks here, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe the suited, I'll expand a little bit, like ace ten or nine suited, maybe.
Where do you stand with king, queen off suit?
Dude, it's a joke. Fold your hand.
King, queen suited.
King, queen suited is kind of an interesting question, maybe. I, I, dude, the guy's just putting himself at risk. Like, the, the big blind's got so many chips. I just wanna let that dude do heavy lifting. I think king, queen suited is gonna be a GTO VP. For ICM, but.
King, jack suited.
No. No, I'm done. No.
No. Okay. King jacks.
It's wide. It's wide. Yeah, it's in there.
King queen off, come on, ace ten. Even I am too loose, uh, too tight.
I'm way too tight here. I mean, come on, like this. This is like a fairy tale, dude. Are you taking?
He has six big blind. What do you think he's doing?
Ace do suited? Are you taking your ace do suited to, uh?
To the the street? I think I'm folding a suited ace here.
Ace three suited?
I'm like, uh, ace nine, ace eight here, honestly.
Yeah, that seems good.
Some of this is a little far from reality.
No, this is what you should be doing because in my mind, he's going wild here.
Well, I mean, if he's truly jamming, let's see what it's actually telling him to jam. So like, this isn't too crazy.
Forty percent. We're gonna be ahead with king queen off here. We've gotta be ahead with ace ten. I mean.
I think people could even show up wider than this sometimes.
I think it's, I mean, similar to that.
I mean, I'm probably jamming. I mean, myself, I'm probably jamming king six, oh, king five, oh, these queens.
Just think of the mentality of people in this spot.
Nine, seven.
They're sitting on six big blinds and they get it folded to them. Anything that looks good, they're gonna say, all right, this is my hand.
I think so. So, yeah, this is like, uh, queen ten is easy, but then king jack suited, hmm, king queen off. All right.
Yeah, that's.
Ay, caramba.
Equal stacks. We're just gonna raise?
You're ripping in his face. No, you're too deep. Uh, I think it is a raise.
Raise.
They're just gonna raise. This is the the this thing is going on. At ICM, like this scenario to PV, you're probably gonna wanna limp almost everything, but with ICM, this junk here very often is gonna play.
Right.
Hmm, I like to call. Yeah, I like to call.
Yeah, call. Good call.
Yeah. Hmm. Okay, it's mixing. Mixing with nines and lower makes a calling here with high suited aces. Chip distribution, okay, and then we wanna rip with the wheels.
Yeah, the seven, eight, nines are not great here because they block the bottom of his opening range. So that's why I like sixes and fives jam more.
Look how deep everybody is at that final table, though.
Yeah, it was a twenty-five, uh, equals stacks. This is easy.
Yeah, easy dog.
Open, okay, push. So this is a fold, ten, 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 ten. The weak call with they stand?
Ace ten suited, yes, ace ten off.
It's not. You fold here, ace nine off suit.
Yeah.
I'm not folding ace nine off suit.
It's gonna be.
I think the small blind has the largest shoving range, so.
I think the floor is gonna be like ace eight. Ooh.
Wow, look how tight we are.
Yeah, they stand suited, it's calling. But the thing is, all these offsuit aces that we don't have, we open rip them.
Yeah.
It's tough to see whether we call or not with it.
I think at ten big blinds, I would have opened rip ace seven, too.
So I like squeezing here. Uh, no, no, no.
Call.
We're just gonna.
I'd call.
If we didn't have an eight in our hand, I would squeeze a suited ace here, like a wheel, an ace five, I think would be a good squeeze. Having the eighth in our hand is bad against late positions.
Well, no, not necessarily, cuz, um, the late position range is tightened up a bit, too. So that the cutoff, which is usually nine, six.
It's a pattern like we see very often, Joe. Uh, with hands, like whenever you have an eight or a nine in your hand and you're against one of the two late positions, your hand loses evila because we we block the floors with eights and nines, and sometimes it's.
How many eights does he have in his range?
Sometimes, Joey, from what I've seen, it was if we block ace eight, king eight, and pocket eight, it was enough for us to be blocking a a bad portion of his range from what I've I've seen before, so.
So I mean, at Chippy V, I agree with that, but at ICM, the ranges are tighter.
Oh, you don't? Yeah. No, no, but what I'm saying is, this is a pattern was noticed many.
Joey, it's true. You just you fold nines and eights and tens more than you do like seven sometimes.
Yeah.
There's 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 that gap.
The patternally found that against early positions, having a ten or a jack in your hand is bad. So say under the gun open, you have a hand like Jack ten suited, very often it's just a fold cuz you have both the Jack and the ten. Okay, and then against mid, for example, late positions, very often, if you have a nine or an eight, it's just gonna be a fold as well because you blocked up the. That's that's a general idea. We'll go all in here. Right? Anyone with me?
All in, nah.
Rip it and rip it.
What is he gonna do? What is he gonna do?
I kinda like going all in.
Was the action?
Suit the king.
This one's too good. It's just gonna call. Worst ones are gonna raise.
I just don't think you have much of a calling range.
There's two short stacks here, so we probably cannot put pressure on the two big stacks, right? But if we could, I mean, this would be a hand I would wanna play with, but.
This is gonna have a large, large pyramid.
Yeah.
But I think this one might be in there. Oh, wow.
Because of the two short stacks. But that's really hard, though. Hey, Julian, we're getting a lot of back noise from you, so I'm gonna mute you. Feel free to unmute yourself when you wanna talk. Um. This series just a call?
Yeah, I'd flip a chip in.
That call.
Oh, Ken is ready.
Yep.
Mixing calls and fold. Jesus Christ.
Uh, pull.
So fold.
Five big blind stack. That guy's risk premium was really high. He's just gonna be way ahead of us.
All right, I think we did the good a good, uh, bunch of, uh, ICM work. Now I wanna try something else. I had a question. And my question will be answered here. Accept, accept, accept. Yes, yes. Hmm. Email, please. Yes. This is gonna work. This is working amazing. Is it? All right. So my question, say we have forty big blinds. And then we're on a spot with cutoff button big blind. That's good. And then what kind of texture would it be? Think something like this would be fun. So my question is, say we are multi-way from the big line against two players. And we check the flop because we're gonna check every time. And then it goes check, check. And then the turn, please.
Do we actually check every time on that board?
Uh, yeah.
I think we might have a couple.
You think you have leads there? No, I don't think so. No leads.
Okay.
Check, check. That's check, check, check. Then the turn. Turn, please. We start. Check, check, check the turn.
It's not gonna be an option for the turn.
Why not?
Maybe maybe the button doesn't have a check strategy here.
Hmm. Uh, but.
They gotta all have checks, some checks at least.
Should have some checks. It may be, let's try another depth.
Let's try. Change it to drill at the bottom right corner.
It's gonna be pretty much the same question for other scenarios. So check, check, and then he checks back. Uh, I think they removed their turn options. And then.
Do we at the bottom right quarter, can you exchange explorer to drill? If that gives us the option to go to the turn?
Ah, hang on. Let me restart. So check, check, and then say bets. Full call. They remove the options for the turn. MTT single respawn, blah, 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 blah. Uh. Okay, so we're not gonna be able to check what I wanted to see. Cause my question was, when the multi-way were from the big line and it goes check, check, check on the flop?
What do we lead?
What kind of leading strategy do we go for in a turn?
Will matter if you switch it to drill?
No, now they removed the turn. They used to have, uh, they used to have the the turn here, but they removed it. The turn was better, so maybe they removed it because there was an issue with it.
Well, everything's on light. Are you in? Did? Are you in the free section or?
Yeah, we maybe we got downgraded. Oh, wait, what's the F?
F?
Yeah, that one should do fall.
I think I think I have everything. I'm not sure, but I think I have everything. But when I look at like Garrett, you know Garrett, when he makes a webinar hat.
No, click the one that's in F, you'll get post flop. You have light and full, so click one with an F next to it. Go back to where you were. Click one with an F next to it, say, and you'll I bet you'll get post flo- flop.
Let's see, let's see, let's see. Well, there's a lot of boards.
They're been adding.
All right, so check, check, and then the button. Come on, button, show show your range. So the button has a strong checking ranger. It's like fifty fifty check. Restart.
Huh.
Yeah.
Maybe F stood for flop instead of full hand.
Maybe. Something seems off.
Yeah, everything's marked light.
Almost.
Hmm.
Well, all right. Is there something you wanna see multi-way?
Well, yeah, we could always use multi-way work.
So what kind of what kind of?
Small blind.
Go ahead. What what stack that would be like to do?
Fifty.
Fifty. Steve's a bit deep. We only have one, so it's one's enough.
I think being the pre-flop razor is interesting. Because.
Both lines or?
Cuz I I think the blinds are gonna be checking quite often on a flop.
I think small blinds could have some leads. That's why I wanted to look at it.
Okay, what kind of texture do we go for?
Like ten high, connected-ish, see if we have leads.
Or big bets.
Ten eight six. Ten eight six, ten eight five.
That's too much, no? Ten and five, okay.
Not sure. I don't know.
So let's see. Small blind. Oh, what?
Look at all those leads.
He's not checking. Who's this thing?
So I think this divides a lot of the heads we defend if we don't know the strategy post flop when we end up, cuz we're gonna end up multi-way fair portion of the time. And we just call on the small blind, big blind's gonna call behind a lot.
So isn't because of the texture?
I think so.
Yeah, if you make it an A-side board, I don't think we're ever leading.
Is there a way to see reports?
I saw something Gareth doing, but I'm not really sure. I didn't watch the whole video. I forgot to go back.
Nine, seven, we're gonna lead more often.
Little tiny bit less, but still a ton.
It's checking a little bit more.
Not much, about three, four percent. Same region of hands are betting, basically.
So is this something we see on that Jack eye board?
I don't think so. I mean, I think you'll still have some, but it's gonna probably drop a lot.
Jack, Jack ten three.
I think if there's a straight possible, I don't think Jack ten three, like Jack ten seven, Jack ten eight, maybe. So it's starting to go down, but you still have a fair amount.
Fifty fifty. I I actually didn't realize multi-way that the small blind can lead bits often on those boards.
Put the big blind in the box, too.
Oh, Jack eye board, we can do it. So queen eye board, can we do that?
Maybe, but it's gonna be less.
Win ten eight?
Uh, towards thirty, these are two-tone. I don't know how rainbow will change it.
What about nine eye boards?
Yeah. I believe so.
How can we get a report for this? Hmm, we can't, right?
The only way to get a report would be to go through every single board and do it, like do your own spreadsheet of what every single board does.
So nine eye board, we saw it a little bit.
Oh, look at the nine eight eight real quick. I'm worrying about paired boards, too.
We mostly step. What is this? How much leading do we have from the small lines? Crazy. On multi-way spots, what the hell? Leading small all the time. Well, I think I this is my kind of BS, so I like that.
Problem is, like, we don't know how to structure our range on, like, you know how we study from the big line, our docks and our check raises, and then we
You just.
studied how to play turns and rip. We study how to play turns and rivers, the hotness, what cards are good, what cards are bad, like, we don't have all that information here, right?
That's right.
I mean, I don't know if it's ju- I assume it's gonna be equity driven, but might not necessarily always be equity driven. I imagine it is out of position. I mean, I don't know if it's, I assume it's gonna be equity driven, but might not necessarily always be equity driven. I imagine it is out of position. So it's probably kinda simple. But I'd still like to know for sure, right?
Check the monotone board too.
Okay, so let's just for fun, really. What do we do here?
Check.
You check here, right?
I think there's some betting.
Mostly a bet. One percent, you just bet second pair with an over. Savage.
What do you wanna do here?
That.
We're gonna get good at this very quick.
All in?
How deep are we? So
Thirty.
The pots, SPRs almost, it's a three and a half? Jesus.
Bet this, top pair, good kicker.
This one we can mix, we can check or bet.
I'd be checking this.
I'd be betting this. Oh, it's a pure check, it's the only one. It's a bet. Ding eh?
That's a bet.
That's a bet for sure. Everything is a bet. It's a bet. Uh, all in as well, why not?
They got redraws.
Open jam, thirty bigs into seven.
That can happen that often. You got redraws.
That? That? This is insane. Hmm, do we bet this one? Two red cards.
Uh, I saw him, I would check, but it might bet, yeah.
You're right, Ken, this is gonna be a disaster.
Oh, I don't think it's gonna be a disaster, I think it's interesting, I think it's good to know if you're playing.
I a hundred percent foresee the, I foresee the disaster here in my case.
Ken, I have to say thank you because I didn't, I never would be betting near this often.
I don't though, because I'm not, I'm unsure of the strategy, we haven't really got into it.
As long as your small blind is well constructed, you just bet everything on certain board. Ten nine, nine high where you can flop the street. Alright, let's try another texture. This one, pair board. Let's drill it before anything. Okay, so do we lead here? I would never lead from the small blind. I would wanna check raise. What do we do?
Well, the thing is, I see the reason why you're leading from a small blind, because some of these hands would be horrible if it checked through.
Yeah.
But this one, this one I think is pretty safe, except for a spade.
So you lead here?
Yeah, without the spade, you unblock there, continues, so it's a good lead.
Yes, they're gonna call with all the flush draws.
Fifty percent lean there. Oh my goodness. Is this really what we're gonna do? How am I gonna add that to my strategy?
Got the notch, bet. Uh, check.
You don't wanna leave here?
No.
About here, we got the suit.
Nah.
You create it. Well, here?
Nope.
So we don't really lead that much on this board, now, is that what I understand?
Oh, we gotta be wrapped around it, I imagine, some like king ten maybe.
Almost no.
Yeah, if you make the pair lower, I think we're gonna have more leads.
Are you okay, Gavin?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh dude, I sighed loudly, sorry.
When he's quiet like this, I get the sense, he's like, no way, and how am I ever doing any of this?
No, uh, if you really, if you really wanna know the truth, I was ordering DoorDash, so I was a little preoccupied.
Man, you would be really preoccupied if you'd see what we're up to.
I, I hear you in the back of my mind and I'm about to tune in.
Check.
Check.
We bet here, oh hang on, hang on, hang on. We bet here, the, the small, we have jack ten, okay, let's go back to jack ten. It doesn't matter, we bet here for some reason, okay? E, okay, alright. And then, this guy. So we bet. This guy has a damn five, what do you think he's gonna do?
Oh, if he has a five, he's gonna raise, we can fold.
He's gonna flat call most of his.
In the middle, you don't get too aggressive.
Not supposed to, but I noticed that in, uh, real people, so.
Alright, this guy doesn't know it, okay, he doesn't know it, he decides to raise, the button sees that and he's like, no, I'm out. Then it's back on us, what do we do with jack ten?
Jack can, I'm calling.
Jack ten off, your call, call everything. Do we raise back with anything?
I doubt it, he's polarized, but he raising into two people. He's already polar, right?
There is six percent raising.
Okay. Alright. Let's see, another board, another texture. Jack nine five, do we have leads on that?
Less.
Yeah, we should.
Majority leads?
I think it's gonna be your own, that's gonna start going down into fifty fifty forty five.
I think it's gonna be at least fifty fifty.
We need two cards between the jack and the eight, is that right?
Anything that can make straights basically, and pairs were raised, and like, we saw it raised.
If the texture, if the texture is like between jack and eight.
So we did see it lead like second pair here with an over card, I think.
We'll hear fifty fifty, let's just see jack eight. Jack eight. Four. We have leads on jacket four, fifty percent. Oh my goodness.
Well, it's jacket because the five's a big gap, if you made it like jack eight seven, it's gonna go up again.
What about jack seven, something? Dark seven, four.
The button still has a really wide range and the big blind still has a really wide range, so you, you put the big blind in the box when you lead here.
So when there's two K card for the big line, seven and the four, the movement disappears. But if it's on the board, two card between jack and eight, we do it, it seems.
Louis, check a monotone board real quick.
So what do you, what do, this is just like a double out of position lead situation?
So are you watching? Are you ready?
I am, yeah, 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 I'm watching now.
Okay, so ten, eight, so how often do you lead? On like ten nines, ten nine six, ten nine.
At a position to two from?
A small blind.
Make it like ten.
Now, ten nine seven was actually the first one we looked at.
Ten eight five. How often do you lead here from the small blind?
I, I honestly, I don't have a lot of that in my game.
Fifty five percent on this.
So, we found out that we have like, majority leads.
Yeah, it's pretty wild, I just, um, we don't really have the, we hadn't been using the tools to study the spot, so it's definitely a gap.
Yeah.
So the heuristic is, if there's two card between the jack and the eight on the board, we majority lead or lead fifty percent range. Now, look at this, you ready? What do you do here with queen nine?
Yeah, I would play check and maybe like big bets on the turn, depending on what the action is.
Look at this.
Yeah, it doesn't really check a lot, right?
Look at ace nine eight.
Ace nine eight.
Ace nine eight.
There's no way to know where.
I'm just curious what it does on A-side boards.
Look at this here, how often do you lead here? Let's just get through this example.
We're lead, we got the diamond.
I would play, I would play check raise here, is what I would do.
Look at this.
If I was getting froggy, I would play check raise.
Look at this.
Yeah, it's, uh, I guess it's one of those things, like your thirty big blinds effective, playing check raise is not that effect, is not that appealing.
What about your, your ten here?
Yeah, man, I'd be playing like check call here a lot. Yeah, it just leads.
Yeah, but it's like, al- almost everything leads, simple as that.
Now, what is, our, our range seems very narrow.
Yeah.
What is, which GTO calling range, I mean, I think our real range is wider than this. This is sixty two combos. So, let me see, pull up, um, my.
That's in a small blind.
So hold on, thirty, thirty bigs, right? Small blind versus raise button.
What, how deep?
Yeah, we only call six point five percent of hands, what's it got here?
See, nine, nine point six percent, right?
And ours is, uh, uh, our other ranges are six point five, it's got fifteen percent all-in, five percent three bets, six point five percent call, but yeah. What does DTO have?
Suit at eights, suit at eights, suit at nines, suit at nines, offsuit tens, offsuit tens, suit days, offsuit days. Some shenanigans, seven, six suited, eight, seven suited.
Pretty good.
So it's king six, king six, very similar, man.
Yes.
So it's missing a couple of hands, but it's very close to DTO. Very close to other, so yeah, so that's a pretty nice heuristic.
Oh Louis, I don't know if we checked any rainbow board yet.
I think rainbow boards will change it. I, I also wanna see some like Broadway mid-mid.
Look at this. Ah, we lead a lot less.
Oh, we have an all-in, bigger all-in component with the rainbow board.
Yeah.
Three times the pot all in.
Hmm, you'll figure, you're doing it all wrong, you're waiting till the river, you just get it on the flop.
I, I know, I know, I should have just stuffed my, my king ten right here. Just look at your two opponents, say, yeah, all in thirty bigs. Thirty bigs, who has a better ten? Wanna play perfectly against me? Let's do this, all in.
See, man, the challenge is like, these are obviously run like in a complete chippy V scenario, and it's just like, I don't know how often you're gonna get to a scenario like this, thirty big blinds effective, that's not at least fifty percent of the field, so then you have to ask the question of like, how does this strategy change at all? How does it change when you start applying like?
Think this is good for like the first fifty percent of the tournament, that's about it, right?
That's kinda what I'm getting at, it's like, I don't know the, I don't know, I don't know.
In a couple of years, maybe they'll have ICM sims, but for now, this is what we got, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair, I mean.
Well, well.
Honestly, what other texture did you guys ask for?
Oh, ace mid-mid.
Ace mid-mid.
Ace ten, ace nine eight, something like that, ace eight seven, yeah, there we go.
So it's like, I guess what I'm saying is, it's like, I don't know how heavy-handed you really wanna implement this into your, your strategy, like.
Well, not only that, Gavin, but we only have the solution for the first street, we don't know the good cards for the turn, we don't know the plays for the turn, you know.
So, part of my, part of my thought process is here, I think a lot of our leads, where we have something decent, is just attacking all, they're, both of their ranges are very wide. I think we just immediately wanna attack all their junk and get it with.
Well, if we, if we end up holding one person out, won't it play a lot like standard DTO after that?
Well, the, the ranges will be a little different, Joey, but I mean, essentially, I would think, if you just, you, I think if you aired on the side of caution, because they have tighter ranges, it would be, as long as you're not taking like twenty percent jams and making that like a full frequency play, it's probably right. But like, um.
Yeah, you can't take into account that the range are, ranges are more condensed.
Yeah, and this exact, and this exact setup, the ranges won't be that much different, cause the buttons got open to same range, small blind is playing the same range, and the button may or may not be, or the big blind may or might not be just a wee bit tighter.
It depend, like if the big blind is the one that calls you, his range is gonna be more condensed than if you were heads up.
But not terribly more condensed, cause it's the small blind that completed, right?
Maybe.
Well, we're assuming that this went in for a raise. The button raised and we called.
Yeah, button opens, we call small blinds, the button range isn't drastically different, I don't think.
So, here, right up the bat, we're against low jack and button, ten big blinds deeper. The same kind of texture.
Mm-hmm.
Not a thing.
Check.
Okay, so, see, this, this is, this is what I worry about right here, where it's like, the strategy is wildly different and you changed very few variables, like you barely tweaked it, and it's completely different now. So it's like, it makes, I guess it worries me to try to find overarching heuristics and like, just apply them in like a blanket strategy when it's like completely different and something like that. It's a guy, you know, I don't know. And then I kinda wonder like, um, are they overfolding? Like, what are, what are you doing if like these people are being stickier than what they should be?
Okay, so similar scenarios, small blind, big blind, low jack instead of button.
Mm-hmm, okay.
No leading.
Right, so then you gotta start asking yourself the question of like, what about that other scenario makes you wanna lead?
So we can only say that so far with button, small blind, big blind.
I think it's kind of what I said, both of those ranges are very wide, so we wanna start attacking their uh, wide ranges when we have decently good hands. All the hands we bet were, um, pairs with overcards and good draws.
Alright, Louis.
Pairs with overdraw, redraw.
Yep. From here, try the hijack and cutoff and see where it changes, if it, if the change is only at the button or maybe cutoff.
So a good hypothesis is, Ken has posed a good hypothesis, where he's saying the wider the ranges are, the more prevalent a donking strategy becomes to attack the weaker components of the range, so like, we can kind of investigate and figure that out pretty easily, I think. And I, I, I think that makes a lot of good sense, to be honest, Ken.
It's like, when it was a two-tone board, it was like, uh, spade, diamond, diamond, and there was like, whatever it was, ten, nine, five, we had the five and the ace of diamonds, so that the diamond blocks a lot of continues with the ace, we have the ace over with our pair. So I think that's why I chose that hand.
Yeah, maybe so.
Different scenario, small blind, big blind cutoffs.
Okay, so this, these are wide ranges, these are wide ranges, so if we follow Ken's, Ken's, uh, hypothesis, there should be donking here.
You're twenty now, but yeah, there still is, it's all ends.
It's all in or check, and it's majority check.
Right, so.
We still have some leading.
Right. There, it's just, you're, there's components of your range that are just wanting to run their equity at twenty, cause it's kind of short stack, I'm thinking. So like, you know, you see the same strategy kind of in like a, in a, in a heads-up pot where a jamming strategy becomes more prevalent. Sub twenty than it is above twenty, right? It's not really a thing past twenty-five big blinds.
Yeah.
So, so it seems like once you're short enough, you kind of pull back the donking strategy a little bit, but you're replacing it with these jam components, just to run your equity. So like, the sweet spot seems to be between twenty and thirty effective, where there's wide ranges.
So back to thirty big line where we first saw this thing, but instead of button here, it's cutoff.
Right, so you still should see a lot of donking here, but a little bit less than where you saw it in the button, is, if you're following Ken's hypothesis. So, it's still prevalent, still prevalent, um, what was the global frequency for the button? Was it higher?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's still, it's still passing the smell test of sorts. You can almost, almost call it a heuristic at this point.
Try, try the hijack.
Right, so if you look at the hijack, yeah, if you have the hijack, we should still see donking, but Yeah, if you have the hijack, we should still see donking, but maybe twenty or thirty percent of the range as opposed to the fifty.
Here we go.
If you have these type of textures that we're looking for. Yeah, that looks like a very connected texture, so I would expect to see thirty percent if we follow kind of Ken's heuristic here. No, a little bit less.
Eliminates almost all of it.
So, that's very good for hijack. He has a more condensed range and it's all that stuff right, on that board, right?
Right.
Like nine high, nine eight six or something, nine eight five.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I remember Jack ten with the flush draw is gonna be his jam range.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, okay, here you go. Now you got twenty five percent, so it's, it's roughly in that band. Um, yeah, seems, seems pretty, pretty good. Something I would make some notes on and maybe investigate a little further at some point.
Alright.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Five forty. Click it one up, see if they're still.
Right, so I would imagine the strategy's still there, some at forty, but it's gonna be a little bit less.
From what I've seen, it's only when small blind and big blind are both present in a hand.
Right, when, when there's. A.
We don't have that.
When there's an open and a call in possession, I didn't see any leads.
Right, so it's the, it's the out of position nature of the small blind, the big blind, which is pushing some of the strategy.
So we're basically bullying the big blind.
Yeah, I think.
Cause if the big blind is not in the hand, this, this part of the strategy is not present.
I have another hypothesis.
Well, hypothesis, this is.
The big blind is wide. If we, what I would like to see, see is if. Say we're in the hand against the cutoff, heads up. What boards were leading against the. Wizard. And then compare it to small blind, big blind and cutoff. May, it could be a component where if we have a lead heads up, we're just ignoring the big blinds range and leading anyhow.
Yeah, look at GTA Wizard, okay.
One second.
Okay.
So, say we leave here. What's his response?
Should be raising, I think, some.
Zero rates.
He's in the middle, right? He's kinda screwed.
Yeah, I guess you just really kinda put him in the blender.
And, and the button's range is still uncapped.
But I promise you, uh, because people, as this is hard enough to study, we don't even really study it, but I mean, I'd see big blind raising in these spots all the time. If they have a hand, they're raised.
Oh yeah, that's from unstudied players, though.
Yeah, well, it's hard to study this.
Sure.
For us.
Sure.
Well, now, this is one heuristic that I've picked up on. Most of the time when we're in the middle, we're not taking many aggressive actions.
So one thing we can say is that we do it for value, because the big line is gonna call with every single pair in his range, every. Every like, if flush drawn is range, every pair of tree here is calling, so we do it for value. When we do it with like a Jack or an eight here, we expect to get called by every tree in the big ones range, so it's a value bet. And we're just completely disregarding the fact that the button is in the hand, we're just trying to value bet against the big one. So this guy calls, what does the button do? The button is gonna play. Button's gonna raise a lot.
Yeah.
This is another concept I'm not familiar with.
Look at Jack seven. I wouldn't be raising Jack seven multi way.
That's their bet. Yeah, definitely, I'm not raising my Jack ten off. Alright.
Wild.
But it is slow playing top set again.
Yeah.
Like your heads up.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it's, it's doing this to kind of protect your, your vulnerable strength.
Yeah.
Alright, that was a very interesting one. Thanks a lot for, uh.
Hold on.